Okay, it is seven o'clock. So I will call this meeting to order of the Hingham Select Board. It is August 24, 2021, 7:00 PM. I'll note for the record that this meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law's Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is anyone else recording the meeting this evening? I see no one identified, so I will note for the record that the members of the Board of, sorry, the Select Board participating this evening are Liz Klein, Bill Ramsey, and myself, Joe Fisher. The first item on our agenda is to consider approval of minutes for August 9th and August 10th. I am prepared to accept motions for both if the others, members of the Board are prepared to proceed.
I'm ready.
Ready.
Make a motion to approve the minutes dated August 9, 2021.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We vote Liz Klein.
Aye.
Bill Ramsey.
Aye.
Joe Fisher. Aye. They're approved. We have a motion on August 10.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes dated August 10, 2021.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Liz Klein, how do you vote?
Aye.
Bill Ramsey.
Aye.
Joe Fisher. Aye. They're approved. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is to consider proposed signage at Bear Cove Park. And I believe we have several persons who would like to speak. I'm going to turn it over, Tom, to you, and then you can hand it off from there.
That sounds good, Joe. Thank you very much. So we have perhaps a couple of members from the Bear Cove Park Committee. Former Chair, I believe Claudia Eaton is here. Current Chair Lauren Murphy is here, perhaps others. I don't know if there's any others from the committee. But thank you both for coming. I know that, Joe, they've done a bunch of work in the park trying to identify ways to make the signage for the walk, for the dog walking program a bit more intuitive and clearer for the many visitors and myriad visitors we get from all over the South Shore. So I think that Lauren has some, perhaps slides, Lauren, is that right, that you want to walk us through?
Yes, I do. And I just want to clarify, Claudia is actually the chair.
Oh, I'm sorry. I mixed it up.
That's okay.
I was trying to be, look at that, I was trying to be current and I messed it up. Sorry, Claudia. So, Michelle, do we need to make Lauren the co-host?
He is one, so Lauren, you should be able to share your screen.
Terrific.
Maybe.
Just make sure you have the slides open first.
Yeah, well, it's asking me to leave the meeting.
No, don't do that.
No.
Green button at the bottom, hopefully.
Okay. There we go.
Great.
You can see that?
Yes.
So it's mostly just pictures. Picture is worth a thousand words, but our goal was to update some of the signage and create some new signage to make it more legible and easier for visitors to understand what's going on. So we have two projects. One is a basic update to the park rule sign. If you went to the park today, you'd see some rules on the existing sign. You'd see some rules on the website, and there wasn't any place where they were all consolidated into one spot. This is the current entrance off of the Bear Cove Park Drive. You can see there are quite a few signs right now. And we thought with this many signs, the likelihood of people actually reading them was pretty slim. So here's just some close-ups of some of the existing signs. This is our current main park rules and regulations size sign. And just for your awareness, the current dimensions are 24 inches by 36 inches. Just a picture of some of the other signs that are currently in the same area. So this would be the new sign. It is a little bit larger. It's 30 by 48 instead of the 24 by 36. And you can see that we have updated the acreage to reflect the current acreage and the park logo at the top. And then they've also added on the bottom right a QR code, and that sign will direct people to the Bear Cove Park website for more information. Just larger so that people can read it more easily. I'm not sure if you had a chance to preview these beforehand or not.
Yes, we have.
Okay. So I can keep moving unless you have any questions about this so far. Okay. So the other project we're working on was adding some signage to the Sheltry Path. We had some feedback from the Back River Condos that that area between the parking lot and the yellow line, when you enter the park, is supposed to be on leash at all times, and people don't seem to be aware of that. So we had some comments that they'd appreciate adding some signs to make that clear for dog walkers. So again, this is the entrance from Lynchfield when you first arrive. We put in some temporary signage, you can see in the bottom left-hand corner, to address their immediate concerns, but we wanted something a little more formal. So again, some of the current signs, we would update the park rule sign in this location as well. So this is when you first enter the park, and we want, I would put this sign right where that existing sign is to emphasize that when you enter the park, they need to be on leash until you get to the yellow line that is ahead. And the QR code on all of these signs actually directs you to the off-leash program. This is the yellow line, once you get into the town, into the park, I'm sorry, and we'd have a new sign here, the front of it facing into the park would be the sign that you can see on the right, and then when you're returning out of the park, this would be the sign saying on leash at all times. And that's it.
So can you go back to second to the last sign that you just did?
Yep.
Not that, the one right before this. So I had a chance to look at this, and I thought, by the way, all the communication was great, and I did check out the, I scanned the QR code and it worked on my phone, so.
Excellent.
That was great. I just thought the grammar on this sign was a little bit trying for me. And the language. So, do you read it with, you know, with a Town of Hingham permit on odd days only, dogs permitted off, so it was, does that mean that you only need a permit on odd days or dogs permitted off-leash only on odd? I was sort of grasping, I think I know the answer. So the suggested language I had, just rearranging your words, simply saying, starting at this point, Town of Hingham permit required for off-leash walking as allowed on odd days only.
Okay.
Then for more information. So I've given that language to Tom and Michelle, and they can certainly forward it on to you.
That would be helpful.
But I really think that this is a very positive step forward. One other question, what are the signs made of and how durable are they?
So let me pull that up. So they would be aluminum, 0.08 aluminum, and that is the typical roadway sign material, according to Weston Graphics.
Do you know what their useful life is?
They said that's what they use on all, like, highway signs.
Okay, so it's a good long time.
I would assume a long time.
Yep, great, great. Okay, Liz Klein, do you have any comments or questions?
No questions. Thank you for doing this. I love the use of the QR code. I think that's a great idea, so people can get right to the website and fill out the permit information.
Thank you.
Bill.
Yeah, Lauren and Claudia, thanks so much for doing this. You know, I've been back there a lot this summer, and I've been very busy, and which is great, wonderful to see it. And I appreciate the committee taking a step forward to address the issue with, that the Back River residents have brought to your attention. So I think this will work. You know, when I'm back there, you're jogging and walking my dog, I think that 95% of the people I see do follow the rules and read the sign. So this should help and make it clear, and I appreciate you bringing it forward.
Right, I think people just aren't aware that they have to be on leash in that area.
Yes, I agree with you.
Yeah, I think, yeah, exactly. So are there any members of the public who have comments or questions on this? Tom, I don't believe this is an action that requires a vote. Am I correct in that?
So what you might just, I don't believe so either. You can, if you want to, what I had kind of just crafted in my head here was, you know, to approve the proposed signage for Bear Cove Park as presented or as amended as you want. That way Claudia and her team, and Lauren and the team over at Bear Cove Park know that they have the formal support of the Board. I don't know that it's a formal requirement, but it is, it is your park. You guys are technically the property owners, so.
Yep, I am comfortable with that. I would just hate to have to go back to the Board for another vote if, you know, they have a different image of a dog or whatever. So is there, are there any Board members who have objections or concerns about the signs as presented and plus my little amendment there?
I don't have any concern.
Yeah, I mean.
Because to your point, Joe, there are signs in that park, right, Claudia, that are put up that the Board of Selectmen do not need to approve or place on their own, so.
Yeah, so.
My knowledge, yes.
Yep, so, Tom, if you're comfortable, I'm comfortable leaving it at that, unless, okay. But there's clearly a lot of work that's going into this, and sometimes it's not noticed or acknowledged, so I really want to thank, thank those who did this. Great.
Great job, Lauren. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item that I have on the agenda is to consider approval of the contract with Beals and Thomas, Inc. for engineering services associated with infrastructure resiliency improvements to the seawall on Martin's Lane. I believe we've got JR Frye and Kathy Riley here to review this for us.
Hello, Joe. How are you doing today?
Good, good to see you.
Good to see you as well. So yes, this is a contract to complete any outstanding permitting and to provide the final design and bid documents so that we can put the Martin's Lane seawall improvement out to bid for construction. We have $400,000 remaining in the account previously approved by Town Meeting to complete the work, and we, I've been following up on the permitting, and actually due to COVID, the local permits have all been extended. So we have an extension of time under those permits to begin and complete the work. The work itself, for those who aren't aware, will be to make repairs, make some extension to the existing wall, and raise the height of the wall a marginal amount across the entire frontage in support of and with the purpose of protecting Martin's Lane, which at this location most directly serves trustees' property out at World's End. Are there any questions?
Bill, Ramsey, do you have any questions on this?
Yeah, could you, where exactly is it, is a JR? It's so, so the wall abuts the trustee property?
No, the wall itself abuts Martin's Lane, which is an accepted town road. And the Martin's Lane extends to the trustees' property, but it also does serve that neighborhood generally, so that there's a number of residential homes which either abut it or are served by it as one of their access points.
Michelle, can you make me a co-host so I can share? Bill, I just brought up the GIS on my screen, I can show you.
If my memory is correct, is this the, is this the piece of land that, when I was on the planning board, that we offered for public acceptance a couple of years back? I don't know if you remember that JR, but.
Well, I wasn't part of that, but yeah, there was a small piece of land that we needed to acquire in order to complete the work and make the entire wall and road part of the public way. Correct.
Okay. And so I'm assuming that that area floods and storms?
It is subject to some flooding, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Liz.
So JR, how, how high will the new seawall be, or what is the difference?
Sure, so we're increasing the height approximately 1.5 feet above the existing elevation of the crest of the wall. And at the north end, that will bring the wall height to about 9.5 feet NGVD. At the southern end, it will be at about 12.7 feet NGVD.
Okay.
Now, it would be difficult for us to extend the wall significantly higher and have a resultant benefit, because actually the trustees' land is also quite low, and depending on how high we attempted to make the wall and the roadway, it would, the water would simply work its way around onto the trustees' land and then come on the backside.
Got it.
So there, there's less of a significant benefit to making significant increases in that wall height at that location.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thanks. JR, what is the time expected to complete? You mentioned that we've got extensions of the deadlines. What are those deadlines, so we know how much time we've got on this?
So the, I have it here from meetings yesterday. I want to say that the, I believe that the Conservation Commission's Order of Conditions was extended until April of 2023. And I believe that the special permit was extended by something on the order of 300 days, which took it out to October of 2022 that we have to begin the work by.
Yep. And when would the work begin, assuming we move forward with this?
If we were to move forward with this, I believe the work would begin in January or February of 2022.
So this work can be done during the wintertime?
Yes, in fact, it's probably preferable that it's done during the wintertime.
Okay. And getting back to the height of the wall, is this height, is this part of the CONCOM permit in terms of the height that the wall would be built to?
It is part of the CONCOM permit, though that is the approved height that was approved by CONCOM.
Great, okay. I have no other questions. Are there members of the public who have comments or questions on this motion or this proposal?
Okay, I have one more, one more point.
Sure.
JR, so I'm assuming with the, when the CONCOM hearings and the administrative approvals, the abutters got noticed and they're all in favor of it? Any concerns from the neighbors down there?
So the abutters were all noticed at that time. I'm sure that some of the abutters have changed, some of the property owners have changed since, but the only comments that I've seen about any portion of the Martin's Lane seawall is that people would like to see the fencing along the top of the seawall reconstructed, and I've had to tell them that I can't do that until the seawall's rebuilt.
Okay, great, thanks for following up with them.
Great. Thanks, Bill. Anyone else, comments or questions?
So I believe this, or Anne Smith-White.
Oh, sorry, yes, but you will need to unmute yourself. There we go.
Thank you. It just happens, this is good timing, I am the portfolio director for the trustees for the South Shore. I am new in this position as of October, so if there was any notification to abutters that happened before I was in my position. So it sounds as if over a certain height, you assume it will have impact on the trustees' property, which is the access road and the, and the parking lot. Is the, the height of the wall as it is planned right now, do you foresee having impacts on, at high tide, having it change the impact to World's End?
No, we, I would not anticipate any impact based on the reconstruction of the wall to the trustees' property. What I was referring to is that because the trustees' property is generally kind of low at the entrance, that when you, we would experience a storm surge combined with a high tide, that if we were, if we had raised the wall significantly further, that water would simply flow over your property and into the right-of-way. In other words, it would go around the wall.
But there's been no study to show what the impact of a wall of this size would, would have during storm surge to the trustees' property?
We did do a, an analysis of a much more significant increase in height for the town pier project, and the impacts to abutters were not, basically in the range of not damaging and not more damaging than the water would have been regardless. We're talking about an existing wall, and we're talking about raising it approximately 18 inches.
I would love to have access to that letter that you sent to the abutters. Maybe you and I could connect.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, and I'll locate all of the somewhat now, old, somewhat older communications, and I'd be happy to connect with you on that. If you could call the DPW office, or you can email me at freyj@hingham-ma.gov. Okay?
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone else with?
Joe, just a quick question, and I don't know if this was, was already covered, but is this part of the FY22 budget? Or where is this coming out of?
The money for this contract and for the reconstruction of the wall was approved at Town Meeting, I believe, the 2016 annual Town Meeting.
Okay. Okay, great, thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Okay, I am prepared to accept a motion.
Happy to make it. I think, am I out? I think I am, all right, so I'll make it anyway. I'd make a motion to authorize the Town Administrator to sign the contract with Beals and Thomas Incorporated for Engineering Services Associated with Infrastructure Resiliency Improvements to the seawall on Martin's Lane in an amount not to exceed $70,000.
Second.
It moved and seconded. Bill, how do you vote?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
Joe Fisher. Aye. It is approved. JR, thank you, thank you for that presentation.
And thank you all. Good night.
Nice, Joe.
Okay, next item on the agenda is to consider approval of the contract with Palmeroy Associates, LLC for Phase 2 and Phase 3 of the South Shore Club Maintenance Facility and Pool Projects. Kevin and Kathy, who is going to speak on this?
I'll speak on it, Joe.
Great, great, thanks.
Thank you for having us here tonight. The original contract for project manager services was signed for $24,000 for the maintenance facility and pool project that are going on at the country club, the, back in November of 2020 with Palmeroy and Associates. At that time, because of the scope of the project, we just worked out the numbers for the first phase along with the town engineer, JR Frye, and then at a later date, we were going to, you know, work on Phase 2 and 3 as the work became apparent of what needed to be done. So as we, this proposed amendment will allow the town to proceed with project managed services for Phase 2 of both projects, the pool and the maintenance building. And there is also an amendment for $13,145, a change order that was for the geotechnical services for the maintenance building that was outside of the scope of the original proposal from Palmeroy and Associates. So the total of the contract amount, maximum cost would be $127,845 that we're signing tonight. A little bit of a change has happened because of the project and how we've decided to move forward by splitting the site work from the original construction. Palmeroy will be providing the oversight services of the site contractor doing the work, so there's a little bit of a cost increase for the, you know, the project manager services.
Okay, the, the second page of the presentation has a, looks like a spreadsheet, limited, yeah, if you could just walk us through that?
Yep, sure, this, in the annual Town Meeting appropriated $2.2 million for the maintenance building project, and we, you know, it lines up the estimates that we've had and then what we have spent so far, and it shows a shortfall of just over $400,000, which we anticipate coming back for the annual Town Meeting this spring. Just to remind you all that the, the maintenance building is on the South Shore Country Club as an enterprise account, and we'll be paying for that money going forward, so we'll ask to borrow that funding and then also pay it back over the, you know, the 20-year term. So as things came in, obviously, we all remember that the site work came in a little bit low, and we're hoping that by delaying putting out the whole project to bid, that we'll get some better prices in January, and we'll have some better news on that estimate come January or February when we go out to bid, and that we won't have to come back for as much money as we, as we are predicting here.
Great. And do these numbers reflect any review or possible modifications to make this more towards a net zero building?
So the, the maintenance building, we have built it, a couple of things that we've done from an environmental standpoint is, we have built it to allow for a future solar array on the building.
Yep.
And we also be, right now, we have the filtration, the washdown station, we're going to make that washdown station so it's recycling, so we're not wasting the water and putting it into the sewer that will be recycling the water as well. So other than that, the building for the most part is a 7,000-square-foot building, 2,000 square feet of that is a, you know, the maintenance building, and the rest of it really is just the garage where the, where the equipment will be stored. So there's really not a lot of energy, other than the heating of the, of the maintenance of the, of the maintenance area where the, where the work will be worked on and for the equipment will be fixed.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Bill Ramsey, any questions on this?
No, I've reviewed the material. I have no questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Liz?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there members of the public with comments or questions? I am seeing none. Tom and Michelle, is there anything else that you wanted to add on this?
I don't think so.
Okay, then I am prepared to accept the motion on the, on the contract.
I will make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign the amendment to the contract with Palmeroy Associates LLC for owner's project management services for Phase Two and Phase Three of the South Shore Country Club Maintenance Facility and Pools Project in an amount not to exceed $127,845.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Liz, how do you vote?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Joe, aye. It is approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Presentation. I know there's, there's a lot of work that's going into this, so we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is to consider approval of the contract with Schmidt Equipment, Inc. for a John Deere 310 SL HL Loader Backhoe for the Public Works Department. Randy, are you here?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
I, yes, absolutely. Thank you. I can even see you. Look at that. So what do we have here?
So what we have is the John Deere Loader Backhoe. It's, we, we'd like to purchase it. It is in our FY22 capital budget. We're purchasing it through a state contract. It's the Operational Services Division Contract Number FAC 116, Lawns and Grounds. We're going to purchase the John Deere to replace the present 2005 John Deere 410G backhoe, and that has about 7,090 hours on it. This new backhoe has about 600, 600 hours on it and is in excellent condition. We also are purchasing it with certain equipment, which we couldn't get with a new 2020 John Deere backhoe. They are giving us a three-year warranty or 3,000 hours. With this, with this used backhoe, there's only 600, I mentioned that 600 hours on it. And we're going to trade it in, trade in the 2005 backhoe and get $16,000 in trade-in, which the original cost comes to 114,900 minus the 16 makes it $98,900. So that's what I'm proposing. That's in our budget. We'd like to go forward and it's in stock and ready to come in.
Great. Bill, any, any comments or questions on this?
Randy, is this, is this for use at the transfer station or is it for general use?
No, this is the transfer station backhoe. It's used on, and on many occasions primarily to pack the trailers. It's used to load things. We use the forks on this also. It's interchangeable. Has many uses and it's in operation every day and it's also, it's going to have a snow push on it to help with snow plow operations at the transfer station.
Great, thank you, Randy. And Kathy, thanks for the contracting work you did on this one too. And the, the return on the money too.
Yes, Liz, any, any questions?
No questions. Thank you for all the information. I think it was actually even under budget, Randy, right?
A little bit, yeah.
Every little bit helps. Yes. Just, just very briefly, Randy, what's the expected useful life for this piece of equipment?
We're, we're figuring 12 years out of it.
Oh, wow.
Anyway, and, and usually it goes longer, but we evaluate it from year to year. We'll see how it goes, but it's usually 12 years.
That's great. And when would you expect delivery?
As soon as you sign the contract.
Quick, okay. Any, any member of the public have a comment or question on this? I am seeing none, so I'm prepared to accept the motion so we can sign it and get it in Randy's hands.
So without further ado, I'd make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign the contract with Schmidt Equipment Incorporated for John Deere 3, 310 SL HL Loader Backhoe for the Public Works Department in an amount not to exceed $98,900.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Bill, how do you vote?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
Joe Fisher, aye. It is approved. Randy, thank you. That was extremely helpful.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item.
Randy, good job, Kathy.
To consider authorizing the replacement of the special one-day wine and malt beverages license issued for Sunday, August 22nd, 2021 to Mike Dyer on behalf of Untold Brewing for the Green at Derby Street Shops with the issuance in its place of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license for Friday, October 22nd, 2021, and to approve the issuance of five special one-day wine and malt beverages licenses for August 27th and 28th and September 10th, 11th, and 17th as rain date licenses in place of five previously issued licenses not exercised by the applicant. Mike, please walk us through this. Good to see you.
Good to see you all again. Thank you so much once again for, for meeting with me and helping support this program with us on Derby Street Shops over the summer. Pretty simply, we had over the course, mainly of July, five days where you had issued one-day licenses that we were unable to operate in entirety due to rain. Those were dates that we notified the general public prior to opening. They were not, you know, days where we started to open and then closed. They were closed before we even opened. And those are the, the five rain dates that were put in front of you. That was July 2nd, 3rd, 4th, 9th, and 18th. I also put forward with, with Sharon right before this meeting to adjust August 22nd, which was obviously this last Sunday. This was done in advance in, in awareness of the potential rainstorm that was, that was coming in this Sunday to move that out to a future date. Other than that, pretty, pretty straightforward unless you have any questions or concerns.
So that last one is the all-re change.
Correct. That is correct.
Thank you. Liz Klein, any questions on this?
Just a question about the October date. Would, will there be any changes? Like, will you need to add heaters or will it be the exact same setup?
Great question, Liz. The, the answer is no, it'll be the exact same setup as, as has been approved. The other thing that I would just note for the board is this, this is the last set of changes that I will put in front of you. As much as I enjoy coming to select board meeting, this is, this is it. So if for some reason any future dates, you know, were, were rained out or on readout or whatever it might be, that's, you, you will not hear from us again.
Great.
No, that's great. It sounds like it's gone really well. How was the South Shore Chamber event?
It was fantastic. We, I think, had a little over 100 people there from, from the chamber. It, it turned out to be a really, really wonderful Friday afternoon. It was, it was nice to support that group.
Excellent. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Before I turn it over to Bill, I neglected to ask Chief Jones if he had any issues with this proposal.
Good evening, Joe. Yeah, we've had no issues with any of the events that they've had so far and no issues with the reissuance of those dates.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Bill?
You know, Mike, last time you came for the board, I, I mentioned that I was, I would get up to see, you know, the, the setup, and I did, and I was very impressed by it. And I really liked the fact that you partnered with the local restaurants, you know, you had those, the ability for people to order food. So your event supported the restaurants as well. It was great. So I thought it was really well done and I'm glad we're able to kind of do this with the rain dates. Unfortunately, and unfortunately, we're capped, as, as you and I have discussed, we're capped at the, the amount of days we can give for the one-day licenses, but happy to support it and hopefully you can come back next year too.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Bill. Appreciate the support.
Great. Are there any members of the public with comments or questions? Seeing none, I'm prepared to accept the motion.
I will make a motion to replace the special one-day wine and malt beverages license issued for Sunday, August 22nd, 2021 to Mike Dyer on behalf of Untold Brewing, the applicant, for the event known as the Green at Derby Street Shops, which license the applicant has certified to the board was not exercised by the applicant in place thereof with the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license for Friday, October 22nd, 2021, subject to the hours of operation and conditions set forth below. And to approve five separate rain date special one-day wine and malt beverage licenses to the applicant for a series of events known as the Green at Derby Street Shops to be held on August 27th and 28th, September 10th, 11th, and 17th, which rain date licenses are issued in place of the licenses issued for July 2nd, 3rd, 4th, 9th, and 18th, which licenses the applicant has certified to the board were not exercised by the applicant. Such licenses are issued subject to the hours of operation and conditions set forth below. The hours of the event shall be limited to Fridays and Saturdays from 12:00 PM to 9:00 PM. The event location is shown as the green located between REI and Coles at the Derby Street Shops, which space is approved for use for community events by the modified special permit issued by the Zoning Board of Appeals dated August 20th, 2020, issued to WSM Hingham Properties LLC and shown on the restricted use area plan dated March 9th, 2020, and approved in connection with the special permit. In order to comply with the special permit, the event location shall provide a minimum six feet wide pathway between the rear and main parking fields. Access shall be maintained to the fire sprinkler connection on the Coles building facade. All applicable permits shall be obtained from the Board of Health. Any future rain date shall be subject to further approval of the select board.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Liz, thank you for that long motion. How do you vote?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Joe Fisher, aye. It is approved. We are looking forward to this and hopefully you won't need the rain dates.
Thank you, thank you all very much. I greatly appreciate it. Hope to see you out there. Thank you.
Yes. Okay, next on our agenda is to consider approval of the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Brian Burke on behalf of Burke's Brewing Company, Inc. for the World's End Summer Send-Off to be held on August 28th, 2021 from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Brian, are you here?
Oh, yes, I am. Good evening.
Great, good to see you. Can you please walk us through this?
Sure, yeah. We were very nicely invited by the trustees to participate in the Southern Summer Event. I think adding beer to the options is fairly new for them, but we had a little experience doing the We're River Farm events this summer along with a number of other social breweries. So we're very excited to be asked to do so. We're going to participate, you know, following all of our protocols in terms of safety and, and responsibility.
Great. And did you want to add any comments on behalf of the trustees?
Hello, everybody. This is an event that we normally, it's a, it's similar to the event that we always run in June, our summer solstice event, which has been happening every June solstice weekend for the last 10 years, I believe. It's similar in concept. It's the Aldous Collins Band. We've added also a high school band this year that, that's going to kick the party off. It's family-friendly. We sell 250 tickets, which is according to, you know, our, our rules with the town. We have the Away Cafe coming and three breweries. So I think it's going to be a really, and, and the weather looks gorgeous, like 72 and sunny. So cross fingers, it's going to be a beautiful night.
That'd be great. And Chief Jones, have you had a chance to review this application?
Maybe I have reviewed it and this is like Anne just said, a similar event to what they have every year. Usually in June though, and we've worked with these different companies as they've been over at the We're River Farm this year as well, with no issues.
Great, thank you. Liz Klein, any questions?
No, no real questions or, or concerns. I think this is, this will be a great event. I know the summer solstice is, is always well-run. Just a comment that it's, it's scheduled for Saturday, the 28th. There is a rain date of the 29th. That's it. No questions. Thank you.
Bill?
No questions. I'm familiar with the event and the permitting for it, having done it when I was on the planning board, so good luck.
Any members of the public have any comments or questions? Seeing none, before we make the motion, I just want to ask Tom and Michelle, the motion is for August 28th. It does not provide for a rain date. Should it be, should there be a rain date on the motion?
So, yeah, we, we just amended the vote list just prior to the meeting with the, with the rain date motion. I didn't call you. That's right. So you don't normally make the motions, Joe, so I called your colleagues and said and pointed it out to them. Sorry about that.
They are the wiser folks. So who is prepared to make that motion?
I, I think I'm up. So I'd make a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Brian Burke on behalf of Burke's Brewing Company Incorporated for the World's End Summer Sol, Summer Send-Off to be held on August 28th, 2021 from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM with a rain date of August 29th, 2021 from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Bill, how do you vote?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And Joe, aye. It is approved. Glad we have the rain date in there. Hopefully we will not need it. So, and Brian, thank you. Thank you for everything. Next item on our agenda is to consider approval of the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Rich DeBona on behalf of Vitamin C Brewing LLC for the World's End Summer Send-Off to be held on August 28th, 2021 from 4:00 to 8:00 PM. And I assume that also has the same rain date. So Rich, are you here?
I am here.
Okay, great. So please let us, let us know what you're planning.
Sure. The same thing as, as Brian had said, we're also setting up the same event to provide beer to the, to the parties there. Anne described the event, you know, better than I could. She, she's gone over pretty much all the details, so it's, it's the same thing with it, just there to be a, be a vendor.
Great. And Anne, did you want to add anything for this proposal?
Nope, I think it's the same proposal.
Yep, I agree. And Chief Jones, I assume you have reviewed this application as well?
That is correct and no issues.
Great. Bill Ramsey, comments or questions?
No questions. It's, I'm familiar with the brewery. It's an excellent brewery and very well-run, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Liz?
Agreed. No questions.
Members of the public, any comments or questions? Seeing none, Bill, you're going to have to do the next one because Liz really had a really long one before.
Well, for vitamin C and D now, I'm very happy to make this.
Okay.
I'd make a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Rich DeBona on behalf of Vitamin C Brewing LLC for the World's End Summer Send-Off to be held on August 28th, 2021 from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM with a rain date of August 29th, 2021 from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Liz, how do you vote?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe, aye. It is approved. And again, thank you for, Rich, thank you for everything. And again, thank you for, Rich, thank you for everything here.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And now we're moving on to consider approval of the issuance of the special one day wine and malt beverages license to Michael Snowdale on behalf of Stellwagen Beer Company for the World's End Summer Send-Off to be held on August 28th, 2021, from 4:00 to 8:00 PM with a rain date of, was that August 29th? From 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Michael, please give us a brief description.
Hey, oh, thanks for having me. I'm lucky enough to go third here, so not too much to add, but.
You're saying.
Yeah, there. Yeah, me too. Ditto on all those plans. We'll bring our beer trailer and sell beer for the summer send-off.
Great. Ann, anything to add?
Nothing to add. It's going to be a great party.
It will. And Chief Jones, I assume you've reviewed this application as well?
That is correct and no issues.
Great. Bill, any comments or questions?
None.
Liz?
No questions.
Members of the public. Seeing none, I accept, I will accept the motion.
I will make a motion to approve the issuance of a special one day wine and malt beverages license to Michael Snowdale on behalf of Stellwagen Beer Company for the World's End Summer Send-Off to be held on August 28th, 2021, from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM with a rain date of August 29th, 2021, from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Bill, how do you vote?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
Joe? Aye, it is approved. Again, thank you for, Michael and Ann for, for your efforts here. And we are now prepared to move on to another license, which is not associated with the event, the World's End. So our next item is to consider approval of the issuance of a special one day wine and malt beverages license to Sergio Pungitore for Lady of the Light Picnic to be held on Sunday, September 5th, 2021, with a rain date of Monday, September 6th, 2021, from 1:00 PM to 8:00 PM.
Joe, I can maybe tee this one up. This is an annual, Mr. Pungitore comes in every year with this request. This is an annual event that they hold in their neighborhood. And I'm not sure he has access to technology to do a Zoom meeting. So he's let us know that he would not be able to participate tonight. But I believe the chief has reviewed this and it probably looks familiar to past years.
Yes. Chief Jones?
Evening again. Yeah, like Tom said, this is an annual event that they have every year. I'm familiar with the setup that they have and they will have a police detail for the event also.
And this is on, am I correct, it's on Oak Street?
It's on Oak Street, correct, yes.
Liz, any, any questions?
No, no question. I'm familiar with the event as well. No questions.
Bill?
Uh, no questions.
Any member of the public have comments or questions? Seeing none, I will accept the motion.
Make a motion to approve the issuance of a special one day wine and malt beverages license to Sergio Pungitore for Lady of the Light Picnic to be held on Sunday, September 5th, 2021, with a rain date of September, I'm sorry, with a rain date of Monday, September 6th, 2021, from 1:00 PM to 8:00 PM.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Liz, how do you vote?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Joe? Aye, it is approved. Thank you. Tom? I think we can proceed to the COVID-19 update section of our agenda.
Thank you. Yep. Bear with me while I find it. Sorry. Okay. So, thank you, Joe. This is the COVID-19 report for August 24th. We'll have a couple of categories. The first is relating to COVID data. We wanted to give people an update on where the data points are. So we are seeing an uptick in COVID-19 cases in Hingham. The most recent DPH data published on August 19th indicates a total of 36 new COVID-19 cases reported in Hingham in the two weeks prior. By comparison, there were a total of five cases reported in the month of June. So as of last week, over 70% of Hingham residents are fully vaccinated, compared to approximately 66% statewide. If you look at only vaccine eligible individuals in town, so people aged 12 and over, the percent of fully vaccinated eligible residents rises to 83%. And the Hingham Health Department is once again publishing dashboards on the town website for information on local cases and vaccination rates. We had been doing that during the height of the, of the original pandemic and we're now back in doing that again so that people can, can see the trends and understand the data locally. Regarding vaccine doses, there's a lot of information out there and we just want to make sure that it's clear for our residents. So on August 13th, 2021, the CDC recommended a third dose of the Moderna or Pfizer COVID-19 vaccine for certain individuals who have moderate to severe immune compromise due to medical condition or receipt of immunosuppressive medications or treatments. These conditions and treatments include, but are not limited to, active cancer treatment for tumors or cancers of the blood, organ transplant and our taking medicine to suppress the immune system, stem cell transplant within the last two years, or taking medicine to suppress the immune system, moderate or severe primary immunodeficiency such as the George Syndrome or Wisconsin Aldrich Syndrome, advanced or untreated HIV infection, and active treatment with high dose corticosteroids or other drugs that may suppress your immune response. If you believe you meet the criteria for moderate to severe immune compromise, please contact your primary care health provider or call the state's in-home vaccination central intake line at 833-983-0485, between the hours of 9:00 AM and 5:00 PM on weekdays. This is, there is currently no recommendation for immune compromised individuals who receive the Johnson-Johnson vaccine to receive an additional dose. So that's what we have tonight, Joe. Obviously, we're working on a lot of things. We're closely in contact with the school department and the decisions that they have to make. We will be rolling out additional guidance and regulations townwide as, as, as we make these decisions and as this unfortunate uptick in resurgence of COVID-19 continues.
Tom, did you want to discuss at all any plans for a testing center for Hingham?
Yeah, thank you. Great question. So we have been working with the Board of Health and our prior provider for, for testing, gentleman there by the name of Jackson Stone, to identify how we could reengage that testing facility. We would be doing it at a different facility, most likely. We're working on that, trying to identify the exact facility and location where it will be. We're hoping to be able to improve upon what we thought was a very successful testing facility. But if we can improve upon that and make it a bit easier to use, then we will do so. Maybe perhaps with drive-up service, but we have to check logistics of the different facility locations and what will work. We are very much, our plans are geared towards in a testing facility open date of approximately September 7th. That's our goal. If things continue and, and we feel it's necessary and we're able to get these plans in place, that will be what happens. But location and definitive date to, is still, still to come.
Great, thank you. Liz, any questions for Tom?
Are there any plans to do like a vaccination clinic in conjunction with the testing site?
So the state hasn't changed their position on vaccines. They're, they're not, they're still not allowing municipalities to do vaccination clinics after the initial round of, you know, back and forth we had with the state where we were able to do some. So the answer is unfortunately, no, right now. If that changes, we still have the ability and the, and the capacity to be able to provide that service if that changes with the state.
Okay, great. And do we have any more data on the vaccination by demographic? I know we had, we've talked in the past about concerns with, with our senior population.
Yeah, so we get some, Liz, breakdown. The problem is, is you quickly run into, to privacy concerns. When you start breaking it down into too fine a category, people could in theory identify perhaps individuals. So our Board of Health is very careful about the categories that we report publicly just because of the, the sensitive nature of some of that data. However, you're right, we've had been reporting in the past that there was a, a higher than we were comfortable rate of, of COVID cases in our senior population. We're no longer going to be reporting those numbers that we had been, but I can tell you that we're continuing to try to follow that up. We've worked closely with, with the folks over at Linden Ponds to try to understand exactly how the number is coming out as low as, as it is. And we're still convinced it's an error. We'll be working with, now that we have that information from Linden Ponds, we'll be working with the state to try to, to try to see if, what, what hole may have occurred, what might have happened that, that that number is being under-reported. But you're right. We've also reached out, just so you know, just because we're not stubbornly sticking our, our head in the sand and saying that our, that number is, you know, inappropriately low. We are also reaching out through our, our senior center and the folks down at the Council on Aging offices are working with their, all of their clientele, all the seniors in town, as needed to, to ensure that they have full access and knowledge of how to get vaccines and the ability to get there and back should, should something like that ever be requested of us, we would be able to provide it.
Great, thank you.
Yep. Bill?
Yes, Tom, this is a bit of a rhetorical question because you and I have discussed this, but for people on the line, I've often got a lot of inquiries on what's the, what's determining factor for ordering masks for everybody indoors on town property? Not to include school, school property, obviously, but town hall and other town facilities. Am I correct that you, that you've, you've been following the State Department of Public Health?
Exactly. We very, we follow their guidance to the T and have been. The part of what we're working with the school department now is some new guidance being provided by DESI, which is the, the state's government, governing agency for schools. We'll be working tomorrow with the new superintendent, Dr. Myestes, and, and, and the administration staff to try to understand how that will affect what the school committee took a vote last night to do, which was to mask K through 12 in Hingham and, and what that will look like. Actually, I think their vote was pre-K through 12, if I remember right. And, and how that will affect the rest of town municipal buildings, Bill, to your, to your point about town hall and the library. And, you know, we have a rec program with a lot of unvaccinated, under 12-year-olds that, that participate. We have to, we're going to be having those conversations tomorrow with the command group and the school administration to, A, try to provide the support that the school department needs for, for what they're going to do, and B, to try to provide the residents with, with clarity of message so that everyone understands what the rules are for the foreseeable future.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else have comments or questions to report? Tom, thank you. That was, that was great. Are there any members of the public who have comments on items not on the agenda? Seeing none, I'll turn to Tom and Michelle for Tom and Town Administrator Reports.
Nothing for me tonight, thank you.
So I do have one, Joe. I have some great news we all heard from Randy Sylvester, our DPW superintendent, earlier tonight, talking about how he bought a backhoe and was able to bring it in, as Liz pointed out, under budget. And Randy is so funny, he would never say that. He would never think to say that, I think, on his own. So thank you, Liz, for pulling that out of him because he does that all the time. Other things he does really well is he brought in a grant, a sizable grant from Coastal Zone Management today, which is a state agency. A $165,000 grant to help us design and build a sewer main on Route 3A. So Randy and his team do great work every day. They keep this town looking beautiful, but they're also working in the backs, on, you know, in the back room, making sure that we're, we're realizing as much out-of-town resources and, and funds as possible so that the impact to the taxpayers is, is as low as we can make it. He does a great job.
Yes, hats off. Thank you. Liz, any report for this evening?
No report. Just wanted to say thank you to the emergency response team, Chief Murphy, everyone that worked so hard last week and through the weekend to have us be prepared and, and safe through the weekend. You know, Hurricane Henry kind of took a, took a turn. We, I felt very secure that Hingham, Hingham was ready. So there, Harbor Master, DPW, lots of people involved in that. So big thanks to everyone that, that worked so hard.
Bill?
I was gonna have to say the same thing. So we, you know, we got, we were fortunate to have the storm miss us, but we were ready. And Tom, good job with the command group and want to thank Hingham Fire, Hingham Police, DPW, all those involved who added extra shifts, extra personnel. We were ready for it, but definitely glad it missed us.
Yes, thank you, Bill. Thank you, Bill. I will just say that we did have a command call on, on Saturday, not knowing what was going to happen on Sunday. And like you say, right, we have to plan for the worst. I know it turned out to be a, a big fat nothing here in Hingham, but it was in on the South Shore, thankfully. But, but we, you never know. You don't know with those storms. Those things are dangerous. I know it's easy to get lulled into complacent attitudes about these when this happens, but the reality is these, these storms are dangerous. People do get hurt and we need to take them seriously. So thank you for those comments, Bill.
Yep. And Tom, you made sure that the town was prepared. So that, that was great. I've got nothing further, so I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Liz, how do you vote?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Joe? Aye, we are adjourned. Thank you all.